Posted this huge, I told Melanie about it, this huge Facebook thing about how the town and the mayor cut the BOE budget while increasing theirs five percent. Five to eight percent went to one percent. She said they're corrupt. She called the mayor a liar.
No, not Owen.
Oh, we're live, okay.
They're receivership or they're...
We're live.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm glad you told me.
It's seven oh two. We'll call this meeting to order at seven oh two and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Roman call.
Renee Waldron.
Jeanette Broder.
Tara Sandy.
Nora Mikarsky.
Melanie Brady Shanley.
Sandra Struvar.
Cheryl McGlynn.
Tori Lovatry.
Okay, item number three, agenda review. We have one item. We'd like to bring in food services management contract under item H for board action items. That's Roman numeral eleven. To add H, so we can discuss the food services management contract. Do I have a motion to add an item H?
Make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Jeanette. All in favor of adding that item? Unanimous? Okay, thanks. Anything else to add for the agenda review? Okay, seeing nothing. We'll move on. Okay, comments. Everybody may know, but I want to make sure everybody knows out in the public that Seamus is coming down to the close of his career here in Winchester Public Schools. And we'd like to say thank you for helping us out over the several years where we've had some challenges. And you've really given us an opportunity to look at things creatively, keeping our kids in district, welcoming others into our district with creative programs. And I've always said you should be publishing into some journals and magazines, the work that you've done here with the research that is really groundbreaking for our kids. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you for your service and we wish you all the best in Farmington as you move on, but we'll definitely be missing you.
Nora, may I add to that? So this morning at Hinsdale, I'm gonna add to it. So we moved him this morning at Hinsdale. He was presented this morning by his, from his daughter, a plaque in which the students and staff had all written special messages in circles. And then it was put together in a collage with the Winchester Public Schools logo. And we did a PowerPoint this morning and the students and the staff wrote special memories and inspirational messages to Seamus this morning, celebrating him. And he was moved this morning based upon their appreciation of all of the service that he's brought to Winchester Public Schools. And on behalf of our staff that was not there, Seamus, we appreciate all the work and all the dedication that you've brought into our district. And as you know, there is no replacement for you. And you've just been masterful at your job. And truly have appreciated all the work that you've done for this district and the students and families. So, thank you.
And you better put that plaque up in your new office so they see what they're getting.
Okay, item five, presentations. There aren't any this evening. So we're gonna move on to item six, public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak in this evening's meeting? Okay, come on up. Oh, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can, we certainly can hear you.
For the public, though, we should probably invite Mr. Sedlak to maybe sit next to Renata so that the public can hear him.
Mr. Steve Sedlak.
Just a few words for you all. We've just come through the budget cut, and that's never a pleasant task. And I want to compliment you, Mel, and your administrators especially, for showing the leadership, taking cuts in salary. That's a hard thing to do. People don't usually do that. And that's money that you're probably never going to recoup. So, but it does show the leadership for the district and I appreciate that. I stood before you a month ago and said, this is gonna be a difficult budget to pass, and it didn't pass. If you were at the meeting last night in the auditorium, there were many people who were, don't have children in the public schools. And so I think we're still up against it and there'll be a more organized effort this time to get out the vote, get out the yes vote. And hopefully the budget will pass on next Tuesday. So, you know, once again, budget cutting is never fun. Appreciate all the hard work you did. So, thank you, and let's go out and pass the budget this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sedlak. Item number seven, consent agenda. Minutes of the Board of Ed meeting from May ninth, minutes of the committee meeting from May twenty-third, and the special meeting from May twenty-third. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of these meetings? Kristin? A second?
A second.
Okay, Tara. All in favor? Okay, unanimous? Thank you.
Nora, can we let the minutes reflect that Kristin Peterson has entered the meeting? Thank you.
Item eight, Gilbert report from Board of Ed reps. Anything to report?
That would be me. And I'm trying to think of what was discussed at the last meeting. It was a while ago. I'll have to look. Can we come back to this one? I just wanted to take a look and see.
Suppose you could.
I don't think there was too much that was discussed, really. There was some presentations by the students, if I remember. They were, they were given awards and all different awards. And there's a lot of, like, happenings towards the end of the year. People are, you know, obviously graduating, so there's different graduation ceremonies and the prom and all different things like that. So there's been a lot of student activities happening at Gilbert. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. There is a vacancy on the board on this Gilbert School Corp., so we do need to look towards filling that in. Tori?
I think I'll do it. I think I'll take a whack at it.
Okay.
So I just show up to the next meeting?
I guess so. You'd have to vote on your, you know, your, would take a minute to vote, but is there anybody else interested? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of Tori to serve on the Gilbert School Corp.? Okay, that is unanimous. You could vote for yourself, you know. So I would imagine that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, zero. Okay. All right, thank you, Tori, for serving.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I'm sure they'll reach out. Okay.
I'll notify Greg, Tori, and connect the two of you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm trying to think of when the next meeting is. I thought it was tomorrow, but now I think it's, no, it's next week. It's the twenty-first. Wednesday is the monthly meeting.
Okay. Item nine, correspondents to the board. Letters of resignation.
Yes. So we have a few resignation letters. Misty Cannol, who is a building sub, but she is seeking to continue on as a substitute teacher for the district. But not as a build, full-time building sub, part-time, per diem is what she's looking for. She just had a baby, so just looking for some per diem work. Jordan Powell was one of our custodians. He is resigning to take on the head of the water department down in Stamford, Connecticut. So he is taking on a substantial job in Stamford. And that concludes our resignations at this time.
Thank you, Mel. We accept with regret these resignations. Okay, item ten, superintendent's report.
Yes, we have a bunch. So I'm gonna start with our Boulder Ridge trip for sixth grade that happened today. So I'm actually gonna ask Ms. Silverio if she'd just like to update us on how they did today with the sixth grade field trip.
So they had a wonderful time. They ate well, played well. Everybody got along. They had pool time. Boulder Ridge was, is really the right choice for us. We are able to just go to a school there. So High Meadow had a lot of other schools there, and it was a little chaotic this year. It was just our, our school. So they had the place themselves. The teachers felt like it was contained enough where the kids could wander and have some freedom, but not get too far away. They had fun playing in the pool and other activities. They found the horseshoes and learned, you know, some of those games and things like that. They had a wonderful time. Came back with some sun-kissed cheeks. Everybody was safe and well. Again, new life.
Great. Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Silverio. We have interviewed and have a recommendation for hire for a second grade teacher.
For that, we have completed our ESBC and local assessments. Student field trips and experiences have taken place. Students have gone to Roaring Brook. They took a walking tour of Winstead, specifically focusing on the flood of fifty-five. We went to White Memorial and the students went to Boulder Ridge. Three students took part in the National Drone Competition. There we, they were the youngest participants and took thirty-third place out of fifty competitors that were there. We completed our building scheduling for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Our band participated in the Memorial Day and pet parades. And Ms. Silverio threw candy out to children along the parade route, not at them, but for them. We completed our application to participate in the master class for reading for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, focused on the science of reading. The Pearson School fifth and sixth grade band held their spring concert and performed in front of a packed gymnasium. We held our WPS annual recognition event. We recognized Tony Santanato as our friend of school for his work on the Hinsdale School Building Committee. A special thank you to Kristin Peterson for representing the Board of Education that evening. Glenna Dulakis was selected as our Teacher of the Year and Ms. Teresa Funk as our Paraprofessional of the Year. Field days were held at both Hinsdale and Pearson schools. Students in sixth grade attended the Project Oceanology Overnight Field Experience. They were very well behaved and experienced many new learnings. We did post some pictures on our Facebook page, and if you've seen them. They had an absolute wonderful time. Ms. Silverio spent forty-eight hours with them. I did send her home after that because she looked like she spent forty-eight hours with sixth grade students. So Barb, do you wanna talk a little bit about your experience with the Project Oceanology experience, trip?
I just, you know, some of these kids have never been out to the ocean and have never been able to touch fish. Kids are avid fishermen. They had their hands in the tank, these poor little fish that were... Students were subject to their studies. They, they pulled in nets of things from the ocean. They did scientific studies of light and quality of the sound. They learned about the long island sound, where they were cheap practically. It was just such an amazing experience. They were ravenously hungry. They loved every minute of every experience of being in a dormitory. And I was like, this is what college life is like. And, you know, we had an RA that was very trusting of our students, more so than Rachel and I. Stayed awake. And some kids did have to go to the bathroom all night long and made attempts to be in their friends' bunk, and it just wasn't gonna happen. They had a wonderful time. It was a tremendous learning experience for them, just to get their hands in. And, you know, they were just throwing fish in the tank, and the kids could pull out the sea weed, and they were... It's just amazing. We got some babies, stingrays called skeets. We got flounder, squid, little fish called porgies. A whole bunch of variety of things that they pulled out of the sound. And then they studied plankton under the microscope that they had in the water, so.
That's great. Yeah. Thanks for your time on that. That's exhausting.
Hinsdale had their end-of-the-year academic awards ceremony and recognized students for citizenship and academic achievements. We had last week, if you drove past the Pearson School, on Thursday evening, we had over four hundred people participate in our annual WPS family barbecue event. We had three bounce houses, a dunk tank, music, food, and ice cream truck, games, and activities at the Pearson Playground. And Seamus and I, I don't think, wanna see a hot dog or hamburger or grill anytime. If you sit next to us, I'm sure we still smell like Burger King. We grilled, I think, close to six hundred hamburgers and hot dogs that evening. It was amazing. We both said at one point, we looked out over the field, and, you know, a lot of times, unfortunately, you look out at dinnertime and you see parents on their phones and not talking with their kids and what have you. We looked out multiple times throughout the evening and no parent was on their phone. They were engaged with their kiddos. They were lounged back in lawn chairs, sitting on blankets, playing on the playground, dunking their kids and, you know, throwing dunk tanks. Just having quality family time, you know. Kids had ice cream all over their face. There was, it was just wonderful. And at the end of the night, I think one of the most impactful things was, as we were cleaning up, the whole thing, there was probably ten pieces of garbage in the field. Everybody cleaned up after themselves. There was no mess left afterwards. There was no wrappers anywhere. Like, it was just downright a wonderful event. And that what came, all of the funding came through our Family Resource Center and our CHAMPs. They had both put in for part of the requirements of both of those programs is family engagement dollars. So it was one hundred percent paid for through these two grant opportunities that we have. So every child, we had that ice cream truck, got to go up to the ice cream truck and pick out whatever ice cream product they wanted. Their family got to. They had an amazing dinner, which was, you know, partially catered by Nardelli's and then partially catered by, you know, Have It Your Way or Our Way. It was more Our Way than Your Way when it came to Seamus and I on the grill. However, you know, just the food was excellent and just the experience of just having people have fun that night was wonderful. So it was just a great night. Last Friday, our students at the Pearson School showcased, showcased their gifted and talented programs to their friends, family, and staff. They shared many of their published projects. The pieces that they showcased were just amazing. Some of their published pieces were wonderful. Tara, your daughter had a published piece. Do you wanna kind of share your parent experience coming to the showcase, if you don't mind?
No, absolutely. I mean, I'm happy to share on any of these things because we benefited from, we went to the barbecue and the Project O and Boulder Ridge, which was today. And I got the full download, and it was a huge hit, by the way. But, yeah, the, the tag showcase was cool. And I actually spent more time with other people's kids just to see what some of the other, you know, between music and, and art and ceramics and in STEM, there was just like a little bit of everything. But all the kids were so proud of their projects and were able to tell me about it. And in, as with the barbecue, I just had the opportunity to meet other parents as well. And I just think that those opportunities are so great to have. To really, especially after, you know, after COVID, but really getting to, to know some of the families in town and some of the parents that will be, you know, when we go to Gilbert. So, and I just think all of these opportunities, and I, to go back to Boulder Ridge, you know, I just, what I heard was just so many kids got the opportunity to hang out with other kids that they didn't normally. And they really mixed it up. And no one was on their phones, and it was just the most fun day. I heard it was just like the best part of the whole entire year. So thank you for giving, you know, my kid and other kids the, the opportunity to have so much fun at the end of the year.
That's great.
Under operations, tonight, you'll have the opportunity to vote on our paraprofessional contract. The paraprofessionals have ratified their side of the contract. Now the Board of Education will have their opportunity to vote on it tonight. We held custodial interviews and have moved forward with two candidates for Hinsdale and one for Pearson. We are currently working on the budgetary revisions, which, as you know, we will be going to referendum now on the twenty-seventh. I did send a detailed email out about midday to the Board of Education, kind of highlighting the points that were seen at the meeting last night for a public hearing. And then Hinsdale, they held their monthly fire drill, and we have the second referendum for the budget on the twenty-seventh from eight to eight. And just so we're all clear, we are open to advocate for the budget throughout this next time period, all the way through the twenty-seventh. So there is open advocacy for Board of Education and myself through the twenty-seventh. Under leadership, participated in one LCSA meeting. And as of this past Friday, during that LCSA meeting, I did become the president of the Litchfield County Superintendent's Association. So, one more thing. So I will be attending the CAPS legislative meeting. Actually, that's a really important meeting this upcoming Monday because, as you know, the legislative session is closed, the new budget has been passed, and they will be really tearing apart the new legislative bills that will be coming out this upcoming Monday. So we'll get some, we're getting snippets right now. But I think our attorneys will be ready to have a good presentation for us on Monday on kind of what the important highlights will be educationally for us. We've been continuing, Doug and I, to meet with Holly and Greg on a monthly basis. I've been working really, really hard with the town manager to address the budget scenarios over the past month and make sure that we're in a good place, which I feel like we are at this moment. Our biggest job right now is advocacy over the next couple of weeks. We've attended trainings on chronic absenteeism. I did complete my evaluation. I have attended the third Friday meetings with the Commissioner of Education and have attended every single Board of Selectmen and Board of Selectmen Committee meetings since March to ensure that I have not missed a single budgetary conversation that they're, they have had. So that has made my weekly meeting schedule quite busy.
Thanks for that, Melanie.
Not a problem. And our attendance right now in terms of student enrollment, we are at a really high point right now. We're sitting at six hundred and fifteen students at the district level. Our chronic absenteeism from May right now is in a good spot. We're at fifteen point three percent for May, which is great. Gilbert's enrollment is at four oh four, holding steady. We are looking at, that's just the grade level breakdown. In terms of our appropriated balance for year-end projection right now, we are sitting at seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars as a year-end projected for the, for the appropriated budget. Whenever you include the non-lapsing fund and grants, you look at a total of around three hundred and seventeen thousand roughly. And then if you flip to the next page, you obviously have the breakdown summary of those grant sources in a more detailed way. Going into the food services line, it looks like we are projecting our year-end closeout in terms of net profit and loss. We are looking right now at a eight thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollar ending in the black right now. Mind you, we still have June to be able to close out, so we'll see where June flushes out. But it should be very close to a wash at this point. Nancy, to clarify?
I have one thing about food service, because it's changed this summer. We'll be having a regular food service schedule for summer school and park and rec and such. But we're going to be doing bulk meal distribution on Wednesdays from three thirty to five o'clock for any child under eighteen that is not currently enrolled in one of our other plans where they're already getting breakfast and lunch. And they will get ten meals for each child at that distribution, five breakfasts and five lunches for each child.
So that's something, if you have any family that you know of in town that needs summer food support, tomorrow I will be advertising that, starting tomorrow on our Facebook page. Encourage them to attend, sign up to be able to get that because it's gonna be critical that they come to, I think it's Pearson, where they do the pickup during that time period, to be able to get that scheduled food service.
On the side where the coolers are, I have a few revisions to that announcement, so I'll send that over to you in the morning.
That'd be good, before I post that. Please.
Persons don't have to sign up for that in advance?
They do. No, they do.
For the bulk meal pickup, they just show up.
Bulk meal for Wednesday?
They just show up.
Oh, they just show up for that one?
They just show up.
My bad.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Board action items.
Yes, so we have some recommendations to hire. We have Sebia, who is our custodian at the Pearson School. We have Nicole LaPlante, who will be our new second grade teacher at the Pearson School. Those are our two new, or, I'm sorry, at the Hinsdale School, I apologize, second grade, Hinsdale School.
General budget for the Nicole?
Yes.
Okay. AFT paraprofessional contract, item B.
Let me just review that with you. So paraprofessional was pre, any increases in what this contract incurred was pre-budgeted, as you're aware, in our budget planning that we did for fiscal year twenty-four. So we have a term contract with them of three years, which is what we've typically done in the past. They are going to be submitting for hours worked, so that's a little bit different than what we've done in the past. So in the past, they've submitted, like, for a whole year, and then they would get divided equitably by the number of paychecks anticipated for the year. And sometimes that would mean we'd be overpaying or underpaying based upon the usage of time. So in some cases, if someone quit during the school year, we owed them money or they owed us money, depending upon what period of the year it was. So we don't want to do that practice, so we have negotiated that we are paying them based on the previous two weeks' hours worked. So actual time worked, so that way we're always even with what we owe them and what, you know, they owe us for what they've worked. Wages, you know that we were grossly out of line with what we were paying them compared to other districts, and we were not competitive regionally in any capacity. So we have consolidated steps and moved from eleven steps in the step schedule to four steps. They are going to be receiving an initial two dollar an hour increase in year one, and then a general wage increase in year two and year three of two point five percent, which will get them within those course of those three years into a more competitive range over the course of the three-year contract. We've also added two stipends to their contract, so this will help Cassandra's department. So we have what's called a registered behavior technician, which is specialized training for staff members who deal with students who have high behavioral or social emotional needs. So it's a specialized training that you get to work with those level of students. So that's a seven hundred and fifty dollar annual stipend to work at that level. And then we also have a three thousand dollar programmatic stipend, which you have to work the entire year in our autism specialty program, which is usually a program that involves students with autism and who are, in many cases, multi-handicapped students also. Because the level of work is a high level of care in many cases, we felt it necessary to be able to incentivize individuals that are working at that level. We, as a district, typically give across the district five days bereavement for immediate family members. The pairs were at four in their contract, so we brought that up to five so that they had matched everybody else in the district. And then...
Does this say the opposite, though?
Increase leave to five from four.
The training, it kind of aligns with the stipend language there, so those are kind of one in the same. And then there was general language cleanup, as we do in any contract, to be able to do that. The other thing that we did require as a training, which is new, is our CPI training for all paraprofessionals, which is the training that we receive to be able to do restraint, safe physical interaction with students. And that's for the protection of students and staff. And that's for the protection of students and staff members, because when you're working with students who have, you know, sometimes physical behaviors, if we're not properly trained as a staff member, we're liable if, God forbid, something were to happen. And, and we could also injure ourself or, God forbid, injure somebody else in that. So we are now requiring in the contract that they maintain their active certification in CPI and pass their CPI certification in order to be a full employee within the district.
So where are these, are these within this, like, um, how do they get these classes? Where are they?
So the RBT, um, Cassandra, would you be able to speak a little bit to that, please?
So the RBT, the Registered Behavior Training, is offered by lots of different online communities. We use Relias before. It's supporting our module completion with pre and post-assessments at the end of every unit. There's work, data collection worksheets that they can practice on and kind of report back. So a lot of times that's free, um, and then, but it's just the time that they're putting into it.
How many hours, you said, twenty?
Forty.
Forty hours.
Forty hours, yeah.
I've got through it myself.
Yeah.
Um, found it very valuable for staff.
And you think online is effective? You feel that online is effective?
Yeah, they were, they're really nice, it's a really nice interactive module. Part of what we wanted to bring, you know, next year into programming was when we can build a cohort of registered behavior technicians that were able to add some generalization of those skills, get them some coaching in the moment, um, and working closely with them, some of our specialized programming. So I anticipate these would be sound that take, we don't want more drinking in that area.
Shut the door.
Yeah. I have a question, Melanie. Um, last night, I think when we had to cut the budget, we, we are not renewing or hiring a behavior tech, we're not replacing one. Is RBT the same as behavior techs?
No.
Would it be able to supplement?
No, so registered behavior tech technician is a certification. So a behavior technician is a position.
Will these persons' RBTs help in any way, since we lost that position?
So the RBT, the BT?
They don't, never the twain shall meet, they don't work collectively?
They do two separate jobs.
Okay.
They, they do work together in some capacity, but they are two separate jobs.
Okay.
Yes, they serve two separate purposes.
How about the CPI training? Where's that done, or?
So that's done in-house. Prior to um, Seamus leaving, we had two full-time trainers within district. So Seamus is a full-time trainer and Glenna Dulakis is a full-time trainer for them. So we'll work on getting a second full-time trainer, because Glenna will need somebody else to be able to be a trainer to help her out in that area. But um, we do all of that training in-house and we maintain Glenna's certification in that. So that way she can, she does, part of it is like a workbook, like in-class training. And then there's also a hands-on piece where you have to physically manipulate and demonstrate that you can do the hands-on piece safely. And you have to pass the physical exam also.
So what level of certification is this? Like, is this only for schools? Is this, you know, like DDS, DSS? Is it like, who's?
Seamus, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so CPI is, it's non-violent crisis prevention intervention is what the, what it is. So um, it's just one of many different entities that's out there. PMT is another option that's out there, the public school systems use. Local law enforcement use it, um, prisons might use it, um, you know, um, you know, residential units might use it, hospitals might use it. So when I go onto the training that I have to go in, I have to keep my, my certification up. I might be in with, you know, um, you know, in the hospital, you know, security guards might be in my training. There might be hospitals, big people there, there might be school personnel, there's a variety of different people that use this training. The main purpose of the training is de-escalation. Ninety-nine percent of it, or should I say nine to five percent of it, is de-escalation training. Five percent of it is really the hands-on piece. But the hands-on piece is really important, because we do have to get to that point. We have to make sure that we are going hands-on, we are going to be doing it very safely. So the certification, like you said, there's a blue book that we have to pass, there's a certification card that expires after two years of it expiring. So we keep records of when it needs to expire, we put it into a system, online system, CPI is an online system that tracks everything. So we get updates, we get warnings as to who's coming out of, um, cert, who's coming up for certification and things like that. And we also try during our interview process to basically say to people like, we want you to be here for the long run. So what, if we're going to invest in you, we want to invest in, you know, this type of training for you as well, too. So it's, it's pretty straightforward and it's an easy way for us to track it as well, too. And it's not just like, you know, you know, we have not certified people, to be honest with you. If I don't feel comfortable that someone cannot do the physicals, I will not certify someone. Just because I'm not going to put that person in that position, and I'm not going to put a student or another staff member in that position.
Yeah, so it's like a state certification?
It's not really a state certification, it's just, it's a, it's more of a, we as a district are choosing to use this module, this survey, this CPI as our, as our non-violent crisis prevention, as our de-escalation strategy on top of that, instead of using something like PMT or something else that might be out there.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
That's pretty great that it's in-house.
Yeah, so it can be very, it's around thirty-eight hundred dollars if you get the training done outside of the district.
We...
Per person.
I um, I'm a guardian for someone who is under DDS and we have been trying for the last two years to get a PMT class.
Nancy?
Through the state, so it's...
Can you take this call?
So it's fantastic that you have it in-house.
Okay, so that concludes the AFT professional, or paraprofessional contract. I need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, Cheryl and Chris, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Family resource grant.
Emily, would you like to come up, if you want to come up and maybe speak into a mic?
Oh, sure.
Please?
Alright, so, um, first off, before I talk about the FRC grant, I just want to say a big thank you to the board, because you guys have just continuously supported all of our FRC initiatives and helping us kind of get this grant every single year, so that we can serve our families. I have, right now, two staff members in the Family Resource Center who focus on um, parents' teachers' curriculum and really engaging families, bringing them together. And we've just had a lot of success, especially this past year, now that families are starting to come out more and do things together. We've really increased the number of families that we're serving and um, supporting initiatives of the district. And, you know, I thank you guys for supporting us in, in this grant. So in terms of the FRC grant, that is a grant that's going to be coming out hopefully by the end of the month. So I am seeking um, your approval to go ahead and apply for this grant, so we can continue with our Family Resource Center next year. This past year, we did so many different events with our families. We took them apple picking in the fall. We had a really great program come to um, Hinsdale and do music and sign language with the students, too. And I think it really just was great for all the students in our Family Resource Center, whether they have needs or not, just to kind of be exposed to sign language and um, just all the different learning styles and different kids that we have coming to us. So that was a really great program. Some of the other things that we had done were, we brought in an African drumming group, um, that was able to work with the kids. And then we had some additional funding through FRC ESRS that we even provided more enrichment. So we had Riverside Reptiles come and they did programs, not only with our Family Resource Center, but we extended that to preschool. So all of our preschool students also got to participate in Riverside Reptiles. So the amount of enrichment that we were able to provide to students and families was phenomenal. So um, we're seeking again to apply for this grant. We expect it to be the same amount that we've had in the past, which is one hundred, one thousand, seven twenty-five, so that we can continue these programmings, continue to support transition, kindergarten transition, preschool, transition and registration. We also screen students coming in and support in identifying if there's any needs and if we need to get kids into our programs as well. So I am seeking approval to apply for the Family Resource Grant.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion, or, yeah, okay, Cheryl?
I'll move to approve this grant.
Second, Chris.
Chris, all in favor to approve the grant for the Family Resource Center? That's unanimous?
Thank you. Emily, I'll welcome you back up.
I'm not going to go too far. You get more of me tonight. Alright, so um, the other reason I'm here tonight is for approval for the School Readiness Grant. So um, we have thirty-four students in the community that will benefit from the School Readiness Grant for next year. We have seventeen spaces through at Advance and then another seventeen spaces through Winston Area Childcare. And um, I can't stress enough how important these spaces are. So these are kids that will be coming to Hinsdale for kindergarten. And by providing these spaces for these students, we're really helping to get them prepared for kindergarten. And not just that, but helping to meet any of their developmental needs that they have right now before they come to us. So um, we will also be receiving as part of this grant, an additional three thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars for quality enhancement. And our School Readiness Council um, has determined to use that funding for further um, support in the social emotional needs for students and consultation to support staff in working with students, um, based on specific needs that they may have. And some of the items that we would be using, purchasing with this funding would be sensory materials to support those needs, staff development potentially in certain areas that we feel, you know, through monitoring of those programs would be beneficial to the teachers and students in the end. So this grant really, you know, it just provides us a great opportunity to collaborate with the other programs in the community, to get kids into programs, get them started with, you know, learning those foundational skills that they need um, to be successful when they, when they do come to school. So um, this grant is a total of um, two hundred, the program funding is two hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred eight dollars and then um, the thirteen thousand administrative funds and the three thousand in addition to that, the three thousand eight hundred eighty-one. So I am seeking approval to also apply and receive funding for School Readiness.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Cheryl? Jeanette? All in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Emily, nice work.
Thank you.
Very good work. Okay, item E, solar project funding document, the Green Bank.
Yes, so this is actually just a quick revision. So back in February, the board had signed the letter of intent for the Connecticut Green Bank. Nothing has changed on the letter of intent, except for the addition of a number nine. So they had neglected to put number nine on, which is what was regarding the neighbor. The client attests to working in good faith with the adjacent neighbor property owner to secure consent for and assess the property for the purposes of necessary tree removal. So I have been working with the neighbor next door, the neighbor, um, next door and they are very excited, actually, to have the trees removed at no cost to them. And to have them removed, um, because they're causing a lot of vine growth and undergrowth that is slightly, if you will. So um, they're very much looking forward to the removal of said trees. So it doesn't cost us anything, it goes through the Connecticut Green Bank, it's part of the purchase agreement and it's part of the project, so none of it comes to us.
We need to approve that revision?
We just need to approve the revision and then I need to have it re-signed.
Can I make a motion? Do I have a motion for the revision?
I'll make a motion to revise the contract accordingly. I'm not sure of the time. Do we have a copy of this?
Yes, it's right here if you need it. It's in addition as of tonight, I just got the contract revision today. If you would like to see it, I have it right here.
It's not in the packet?
No. It's adding number nine, it's aligned.
Can I ask where we stand in terms of the um, the application for the funding piece?
Yeah, so the next funding round will be in August. So my understanding is what happens is because we've signed the letter of intent, that means that the Connecticut Green Bank will then put our application out there and they will look for funding for us. Then they will do an R, an RFP, to be able to find bidders that want to bid this project. They will find the lowest bidder and then at that point, we will be asked to sign on and sign for consent at that point, to move into a contract with them. So this is all non-binding at this point, until you sign a binding contract with them.
And if we don't make it in this, this round, if we're not, if our grant application isn't accepted, or?
Um, there's usually two rounds per year, yeah. So I anticipate, though, that we are going to make it into the August. Is, because we've had our foot in the door for a while now, so I anticipate we will be moving in August.
I want to ask a question and this might be putting the cart before the horse. But if we ever had to, say, add on to Hinsdale because of numbers, would we go up or would we go out? And then would that cause problems with solar panels? I heard Nancy.
It'd be difficult to go out.
Correct.
So I think up would probably be your only solution to that. And I, my understanding is when Hinsdale, one, the cert, the original side of the building does have the um, structural capabilities to go up and the new construction area of the building does have the capability to go on top of it also. So you would need to remove said panels, but you could always reinstall on top of whatever you build.
Contract or anything that we're going to be signing?
We would have to obviously rework whatever.
Put a clause in there that if we...
I think we would just need to rework that down the line if that ever had to come to fruition. We could relook at the contract at that time and rework whatever we needed to do.
We might want to put that up in that and just go back to it at some point?
Yeah, we certainly can look at that.
Discuss, yeah.
Sure.
Ahead of it rather than behind it.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, Cheryl has a motion to accept the contract with the amendment to add number, line number nine. Do we have a second?
A second, Tara.
Tara?
Thanks.
Are in favor? That's unanimous, Barb? Okay, so Source iReady?
Yes, so um, we started this conversation last year. We've done a lot more research and we have decided and brought this actually to Curriculum Committee. So we are going to move forward with a recommendation to the board to move forward with the purchase of iReady online assessment and instruction material. So this would replace our current NWEA system, would replace ST Math and Lexia. And we would be applying for partial grant funding, which um, would come through the Science of Reading Grant, the Reading Support Grant that we have, that we will be applying for at the end of the month. So we are asking for the board's support of purchasing this in the amount of twenty-nine thousand. It is going to be offset by all but twelve thousand dollars, because we would no longer have NWEA, ST Math and Lexia needs in the district. The iReady product will provide not only the assessment, but it provides student intervention, student assess, student assessment and then instruction that can be utilized in the home environment also. So that way we can support home learning and intervention also. So we would ask for the board's support.
Take a motion to accept, the iReady?
Somewhat.
Kristen, Cheryl? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Okay, administrative stipends.
Yes, so um, as you're aware, we cut last year the assistant principal position at um, the Pearson School. Barb and I have been um, adding to our administrative duties. The price that we were paid this year did not get increased. So these are the same exact prices from last year to this year. So Mrs. Silverio was ten zero nine two and I was nine zero four eight. So we are asking to continue that. These stipends ultimately save the district on average between benefits and salary around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Chris.
Cheryl and Chris, for both stipends, all in favor? Unanimous? Unanimous? Thank you all. Okay, now we're moving into item H, which was added to the agenda, Ed-Advance Food Services Management Contract.
I'm going to invite Nancy up to review that.
So the food service contract that's been proposed to us is an extremely reasonable contract. It's providing all the wonderful services that they have done such a terrific job providing for us and keeping us out of trouble because it's getting more and more difficult to run all of these programs. And they've also been helpful with writing grants for equipment and such too. Going after extra commodities when they come available, they're quite aggressive with that for us, which also helps us save on food service costs. So they are asking for a whopping two percent raise for a thousand seventy dollars. So it is my recommendation that you say thank you and approve it.
Thank you.
We don't have a piece of paper?
I'll second.
Nancy has a contract copy if you'd like to see it.
Okay, Cheryl made a motion.
Actually Nora will need to, or do I?
Yeah, I have to sign it.
You sign it.
Yeah, Cheryl made the motion, Sandra seconded. All in favor of the approval? That's unanimous, Barb?
My pen died in the middle of that.
Okay. That's unanimous. Okay, item number twelve, new business discussion, possible action, policies for the first read. We've got a boatload, one to fifteen, and largely just minimal changes to wordage. So I guess we have to go through each of these to move these to second read, yeah? Motion for each.
I mean, that's, we could make a motion to approve all of them to move for second read.
Could we?
Is it possible? With anyone, if anyone, you go and do the list, is there any policy on the first read that you? Uh-oh, uh-oh. Christine?
She's got edits, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we start, anyone, okay, so who's looking at the list, starting with the first? What's the first policy that anyone has any comments or should we, changes to?
Three, five, one, six.
All right, everybody's?
So someone would need to make a motion to review all the policies and that would need to be first and seconded.
Okay. I make a motion to review all the policies, I'll review.
Seconded.
Policies here, and so that's Nora and Cheryl. Do we want to raise our hands for that, all in favor of review? Excuse me, all right, that's unanimous, now we're reviewing.
Okay, so on, is there any proposed changes for five, zero, two, one?
Zero, five, two, one?
Zero, five, two, one, did I switch?
That's the first one.
That's the first policy. So the next one is one, three, three, zero, any proposed changes, comments on that one?
This is a good start.
Yep, next one is three, two, eight, one point one. Any proposed changes, correction, comments on that one?
We're including, this is your, just.
Yeah, these are just on top of what is in here, top of the proposed changes.
So the green means that we're just adding that word, correct?
Yeah, that was. Okay. All right, now go into policy three, five, one, six, sub A, forenze A, any comments?
Item five.
All right, we're at line, line five?
It says one, two, three, four, five.
Page fifty.
It's a period at the end of the sentence. Then the second page, there's a paragraph that starts safety and hazard assessments.
Second, next page?
Yep, and it's, the line, district, the last line, district shall correct identified hazards before used by student stuff. It's.
That's not a sentence.
It doesn't refer back, it's, it's.
Hazardous shall be conducted annually for building facilities and grounds. District shall report annually on safety and hazard assessments to the superintendent school or designate.
Or their designate.
Or their designate. What's the issue?
Keep going.
Keep going.
A written inspection report shall be kept on file for ten years.
Keep going.
District shall correct identified hazards before, for used, for being used by student staff or community, so being should be in there.
All right, who's taking the edits on this?
I am.
Okay.
Anything further in that?
No, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking to the next policy, which is three, five, four, one. Any suggested additional edits or changes or comments?
Yes.
Okay, where were they, babe, there?
All right, pupil responsibility, D.
Page number?
Well, it goes onto page fifty-six, does everybody have it?
Fifty-five, fifty-five? Okay.
Fifty-six?
It's.
Pupil responsibility while waiting for the school bus and boarding it, that's the last sentence in that, fifty-five? Now we're on fifty-six?
Uh, yeah, I was trying to figure out how to say which section we were on exactly.
Oh, okay.
So center of the page, if you're looking at fifty-six, do not eat, drink or smoke on the bus. Are we adding vaping in all areas where we have smoking?
Yes, that's a good, good addition. Yep.
Do not eat, drink, smoke or vape.
So that's a B five. Two B five.
Good catch.
All right, next page, Article two, A, regular transportation. Section one, pre-kindergarten, all buses, all busts, all bus.
All buses.
All buses?
All buses.
That is not true.
All busts?
That is not true anymore.
Okay.
Pre-kindergarten does not all get bust.
They are all not, they are not all bust.
No. They follow, it should be, so that should be removed actually. And it should be pre-kindergarten to grade two point five miles.
Okay, so it has to be consistent, so.
Yes.
So that's, okay, so pre-kindergarten to grade two point five, instead of.
So just add pre-kindergarten to grade two point five miles. Well, that's in their IEB, so that's specialized, yeah.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right.
So that was thirty-five forty-one.
Next policy is thirty-five forty-one point two-two. Anything on that one?
No.
Anyone else have any comments, suggestions, changes, additions? All right, next one, thirty-five four two point one.
So I have a question about this, I know this is the SLP, but breakfast, is that supposed to be mentioned in this? Because I'm not sure if it's food service, if it's supposed to be breakfast and lunch or just lunch?
Which policy are we on?
Three, five, four, two point one, on page sixty-four.
So what's your thing?
So this is talking about lunch program, she wants to know if it should reference a food program or breakfast and lunch program?
The food service program.
Okay, so the first sentence.
Nancy, what do they call it on the contract that we just signed? Food service program, yeah.
So in the first sentence, the school food service program places lunch.
I would just say the food service program.
The food, the food service in there should be in the third paragraph as well, where it says school lunch again. That's the only two places I see.
Also in the last sentence, because, and direct, where it says, and direction from the, and it should be capitalized since it's the superintendent of schools.
Okay. And super.
Or their designate, are we still on page sixty-four?
Yep.
Or designate.
Or designate. Or designate, it doesn't need to be there.
Anything else on that one?
The first line, well-balanced lunch is essential for the best work of the students. Do we want to include breakfast in that or just leave it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, well-balanced meal.
There you go, perfect.
Next policy, four, zero, zero, one, anything on that one? All right, four, one, one, one point one. Anyone suggested additions, changes, comments?
Yes, center of the page sixty-six, equal employment opportunity. One, two, three, four, fourth or fifth line down. As an equal opportunity applicant, comma, the capital should be Board of Education, does not discriminate.
Okay, so capitalized Board and Ed, education.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, next one, four, one, one, two point five, forenze A.
Center of the page sixty-eight, no later than ten calendar days after the capital superintendent. And I have a question about the bottom paragraph.
On that page?
Yeah, the second sentence, notwithstanding the foregoing, could we just, it's ridiculous. We could cut that out and just say the falsification or omission of any information, you know, is a criminal charge, et cetera, et cetera. Cause it's, I'm trying to go, the foregoing, I'm trying to read back and notwithstanding, and I'm like, wait, why do we even have those words in there?
I agree, notwithstanding the foregoing is not necessary. Just always in there.
I know, I know.
We like them words.
Well, if it, if it means something legally that I'm not understanding, definitely.
No, I mean.
Moving on?
Next one, four, one, one, three point six, forenze A. Anything?
Superintendent is capitalized.
Okay. Yeah, next one is four, one, one, eight point one five. Anything in that one?
The second page seventy-five, examples of bullying in the workplace. The is left at the end of the paragraph.
Oh, it should be the board believes that.
So the, the was down to the next line, I'm guessing?
Where it says board, board should go back up into that sense.
Oh, goes back up to the paragraph?
Yeah, it should go back up to that sense.
Got it.
Any other?
I'm looking at something on the next page, seventy-six, reporting of bullet, workplace bullying procedures, first paragraph. Oh, it's a comma, okay. While investigating and responding to the prohibited misconduct, the principal, it should be principal, comma, superintendent, comma, or designate.
Where are you at, Chris?
Last line of.
Third line up, from the, in the last, in that paragraph.
While investigating and responding.
The principal, it says principal slash superintendent, it should be principal, comma, or superintendent, the principal or superintendent or designate.
Principal, comma, superintendent, or designate.
Cause it's got the slash there, you don't think it?
It means the same thing.
It, it does, but we don't have principal slash superintendent here.
No, we don't.
Do principal, comma, superintendent, or designate.
Because these are distinct jobs, they're one person.
Anything else, anyone else? Next one, four, one, five, two point six, forenze A. Any suggested changes, comments, additions?
This whole family leave act one, I don't know where things start and begin and end because there's so much duplication. What I can just say is page eighty-three, if that's in the same one? I don't know if that's in the same policy, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big monster.
And then it's types of leave and then the paragraphs are beginning with lowercase, so I'm not sure how that's supposed to.
A qualifying, a veteran.
Like, I don't know, there's supposed to be a dash.
Oh.
Lowercase, A, veteran, A.
Well, a qual. Yeah, it's really.
Or pulled up into the previous, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it, it looks like it's supposed to be part of the, the rest is just the way they, the pagination gets. It's like, you know, it's illness, it's semicolon, then spouse, son, daughter, parent, I don't think there should be. That's, I don't know where, why that, where the asterisk with spouse, son. I think that spouse, son, daughter, parent, it should be kind of in a forens because the asterisk applies to eligible member of the armed services, and that would be spouse, son, daughter. But then you're looking at, then it would be serious, serious injury, illness, and then a qualify, somebody such as making illegal. So that, it's where the spouse, son, daughter, parent or next of kin thing is, is out of spot, I think is the problem.
Okay, so that is a continuation of the paragraph.
Where it says eligible member, you see the asterisk?
Yeah, yeah, I see it.
Then the asterisk, so that's more of something that's like a footnote, but it's not placed right.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you mean, yep. So it's the forens continued on, so that's like a page break. And then, but then the one below, a veteran should then be pulled back up, up to the end?
But combine the paragraphs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
It is a total bear.
Anything else on that policy? Anyone?
Barb is, I am, this is page eighty-seven? I don't know, but again, this, this one is so long, I'm not sure if I'm.
It is foiling me, it is very long.
Um, the third paragraph, in order to secure, page eighty-seven?
Yep.
The, it's actually Form WH dash three eight five V for veteran, it's referenced elsewhere in here.
Okay. So WH three five.
Capital V.
Three eight five should be, then capital V.
V as in veteran, yep.
Veteran, so that's, but there's two forms, is it a deal form, WH three eight five, current serviceman, and then one for veteran, so that's, okay.
Yeah.
So the second VH hyphen three eight five should be.
Have a V. Capital V at the end of it, yeah, it's referenced elsewhere in the.
Okay.
And it makes more sense that there's supposed to be two separate ones, so.
Yeah. Good catch. Anything else in this bear?
All right, if ninety, page ninety-five is still on this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so limitations apply to item two, this is page ninety-five, for the employees, needs an apostrophe?
Employees, all insurance health, okay.
Ownsurey self.
Number two, for the employees.
Ownsurey self.
Possessive. This goes to one oh seven.
Oh, okay, got it. Bottom of the page, an instructional employee, a big X, is there like a comma or something there?
International employee required to extend his. Where are you at, Chris?
Oh, yeah, an instructional employee, and remove the comma.
What page?
Um, ninety-five, bottom, last paragraph technically. An instructional employee required to extend, and it's, should be their leave by the district. So just take out the comma and change to their. One oh one.
All right.
And I'm not sure if it's just how it looks.
Yeah.
Second paragraph, qualifying exigency. Should there be a semicolon at the end of that?
At the end of where?
At the end of international waters, at the end of that paragraph, because it's a list with, as colon reasons. And then the one underneath it has a semicolon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where are you, Chris?
All right, so that is page one oh one, and it's the second paragraph, and after the word waters.
Waters qualifying.
Off here.
Okay, any others?
Semicolon.
That's it for that one, thank you.
So.
Okay.
Next policy.
Are we on second or are we still on first?
Forty, we're still on first.
Okay.
Two, this one and next one, forty-four, one, zero.
So can I ask in the overall terms of this? So can I ask, in the overall terms of this, this is occupational exposure to bloodborne pathogens, there's no actual reference to bloodborne pathogens in the entire paragraph. So it's just like, all right, well, we recognize that we gotta keep everything clean, and you gotta watch and, like, that's it, so it's like, I'm not sure where.
So it's just more inclusive for any communicative disease, whatever, yeah. I mean, that's the title of it?
I'm done, okay. That's how I'd add, just reading this feeling that could be anything, so I wasn't sure how that applied back to bloodborne pathogens.
Good point. All right, next one, the last one on first read is five, one, 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 parentheses. Anything on that one?
I think the. Yeah. Four, is it the fourth paragraph, second sentence, the district, should the district be capitalized?
Little pieces here.
One, ten. District shall provide, that's on one, ten, sure.
I think it's capitalized or else.
Yeah, it is capitalized elsewhere, within the same con- so just that, you see that, Mel?
Oh, yeah.
It says, it's in the paragraph, starts the parent or person shall exercise such option, and second sentence, the district shall provide the parent or person with information, okay.
Can I ask, just, I want to ask about the third paragraph there. It says that a child five years of age, if you could just clarify this, until six, and then a parent having control of child six does not have to enroll them until seven, when does that occur? That's a little confusing.
So, this is actually all gonna be changing as of next September, not this September, but this upcoming September, September of twenty-four. Because they're changing the kindergarten start age, but for this particular one, kindergarten's optional in the state of Connecticut. So technically, you don't have to start school until first grade. So. You. You can hold them until seven, but they have to turn seven when they're in first grade, is my understanding. But they have to.
That's a plenty of paragraph, because it's not really clear as to why.
As to why, just giving his parents some more control, determining when his kid's school, yeah.
Right, but it doesn't refer to kindergarten, et cetera, so do you see where it says a child? Read the paragraph, right?
Oh, yeah, it is, it's very weird.
Right, yeah, it is, it's confusing, so.
So what they're doing legislatively, they just changed it, so the start age for kindergarten, starting not this September, the following September, will be September first will be the cutoff, so your child will have to turn five before, on or before August thirtieth.
Really?
In order to be, so we're going with the rest of what the world does, in the United States.
And what is it now?
That's what everyone does.
Not all but two states right now, January first, so.
And Jersey does that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're one of them two states that don't do that.
Yeah.
So we're definitely in the minority when it comes to that.
No, that's good.
It actually helps what's there.
Developmentally.
Developmentally, yeah, I mean, cause we always call or refer to burr babies, because they're usually not quite ready for the grade that they're in.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve, move all of these policies to first read to second read?
I make a motion to move to second read.
Did you do the other one?
Oh, the second.
We're still on the, so Jeanette, Nora and Jeanette.
Okay.
To move to second read.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
And now we have two policies for second read, first one is five, three, five, one, three, one, point two, one. Any discussion on this?
Five, one, three, one, two, one?
Yes. That's, that's our act of violence.
Page one fifteen. I make a motion to accept policy five, one, three, one, point two, one.
Are you second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Unanimous, all right, that was Sandra on the second.
All right, next policy is five, one, four, five, point five, one, one, this is the exploitation, sexual harassment, sexual abuse, prevention in an education program policy. Any discussion?
I make a motion to accept.
Do you have a second on that?
A second.
Second is Jeanette, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you for all that work.
Thank you, Sharon.
We do have a question, though, I want to know if we can meet again for policy, because we were, we were very close to finishing all of this, wordsmithing.
Very close.
Well, we had at least one more third to go, come on, I'm optimistic. So, we were wondering if we can do this June twentieth or June twenty-seventh? For a policy meeting, a special policy to finish it all up.
That's fine with me.
June twenty-seventh is the referendum day.
Twenty, the twentieth works, yeah, can't do the referendum day.
So that's next.
Next Tuesday, seven o'clock-ish, or ten, seven?
Seven.
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 So make sure we get it done.
Seven with toothpicks for your eyes. Do you want to do earlier?
I can do as early as six, I'm on trial, so I can do it.
Can everyone do six? We can do six.
I think so.
The twentieth, Tuesday.
Does that work for you?
Next Tuesday, a week from today, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a week from today.
All right.
I've worked things, I'm on trial.
Do you want to do hints, Dale, so that we can use the smart board and do it like we've been doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that helped.
All right.
Can I also note that, like, what a difference it makes in, like, sorting things, you know what I mean, and reviewing them, especially when we're sitting here, without having the, we have different iterations of it in front of us, and having just the one is like really nice, there's one, thank you for the.
The cross, the crossouts and the coloring has helped.
Oh, man, it's like, it's so nice.
Yeah, that's.
It only took us six years to figure it out. Are you saying that was not, are you saying that was not efficient?
Yeah.
So special policy meeting, June twentieth, six P M, so we'll, you post that one.
Yes, I will.
Okay, item thirteen, public comment, anybody in the audience? Anybody in the audience, anybody in the audience, okay, moving on, seeing no one. Item number, that's a typo. Executive session, that's the wrong room and numeral. But that's okay.
It is.
We're gonna look at item fourteen, and we're gonna pretend that's item fourteen.
Make a motion to move into executive session and invite Mel. Right, anyone else, and.
At what time? Eight, eighteen, executive session, inviting Melanie to executive session, Cheryl first, Tori second, and inviting.
Anyone else need to be invited?
No.
Okay.
So.
Remember, please, that the microphones are still live, this will still be going live, so when you come back, this is all live, or everyone, please be cautious of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So all in favor of that, to executive session? Okay, that's unanimous.
Can I ask a question about the policy? Oh, my, yeah, totally, I can talk to Nora.
How, Mel? How, no. About three forty?
Which ones we have before us again?
And I would say the last, like, eight at most.
No, 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 I don't know why I wouldn't, I'm sure.
Send these pictures. So.
Anyway.
You could ask them to. Unfortunately, I don't, because I've been in pockets tonight.
Sorry.
Sounds like it.
All right.
Yep.